You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the September 30th meeting of the LaPorte County Council's workshop. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the LaPorte County Council Workshop to...
Thank you for having us back. I was hopeful the agenda tonight wasn't as long as last time I was here, but apparently I am mistaken. So, um, I brought these handouts again. I can kind of pass them up. I only brought seven. I didn't catch Mike doing on vacation last time. Sure, you're welcome.
We can share.
So, the last time I was here, I kind of went page by page. We got through the concept, kind of the referral piece. We talked about the 46 government entities that we can work with currently. If you look at the second page on that handout, there is a testimonial from the county of St. Joe, who is one of our closest, nearest and dearest government clients that we have today. I wanted just to make the most time of it and skip straight to the model itself, kind of the concept of fleet management and what we try to implement into our government agencies. So, what we bring in to go ahead...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, so...
Sorry, my name is Nate, and I'm on the new business side of Enterprise Fleet Management. Todd is our director, so he oversees the entire fleet management kind of division within Indiana.
I've been with Enterprise for over 20 years now, so I've done a few of these in my time.
Yeah.
So, this has been a, this is definitely, you know, the government space is one of the fastest, if not the fastest growing, sorry, if not the fastest growing space for us. And I think a lot of it is the financial value we can bring and the financial model we bring, which is really what fleet management is. So, as we get into this, as we dive into this, we will talk about some of the programs and whatnot. I just want you all to understand that all of this is piecemeal, right? So, if there's something that makes sense for the county, maintenance, resale. If there's something that doesn't make sense for the county, maintenance, it's entirely up to you all to decide which parts you implement. But this, this piece right here is us being able to be proactive and create a, and create a, you know, proactive fleet replacement policy is the, is the gist behind what fleet management really is. And that's what we do on, that's what we do in our business on the rental side as well.
So, what this is, and this is the last page in the handout that I gave you, is a 10-year conceptual model of what a proactive plan across the fleet would look like for the county of LaPorte. So, I took in 99 of your light duty vehicles. So, this is the sheriff vehicles. This is any light duty inside of the highway department, Parks and Rec, the juvenile department, the probation center. Any of their light duty vehicles are included in this analysis. The only thing excluded are any heavy duty on the highway, so any of their freight liners, things like that, ambulances, and then fire trucks. Those, we don't include. We don't really handle those due to liability. Those will stay the same within the county of how you kind of monitor those today. So, looking at that fleet, we, we look at what is the current mileage of the fleet? Based on what we see on our other, other government clients, what is the average maintenance cost across the fleet based on the mileage? And then what do we think that you're paying in fuel based on the driving patterns and the mileage of said vehicles? So, if you look at the gold line, um, at the very top of that kind of 10-year breakdown, the gold line is what we estimate you're doing today. So, the gold line tells us you're spending about $600,000 per year on new vehicles. It's 11 purchases. Now, again, this is just light duty. Majority of those, as you can imagine, are for the sheriff. You're not really selling or getting a ton of resale out of the fleet. So, typically a vehicle dies and, and we get rid of it. We take it to auction. Or with the sheriff's vehicles, we'll put them on gov deals and get a couple thousand dollars out of them, but nothing major. Maintenance and fuel are in line with what we would expect on a traditional government fleet. So, about $400,000 a year in maintenance and then about a half million in fuel. For a total fleet budget, so all encompassing acquisition, maintenance and fuel, just being under, just under one and a half million dollars. Or does that say over, sorry, just over one and a half million dollars a year. Now, again, this is off the light duty analysis that we completed on the 99 vehicles that we did the analysis on. Do we have any questions before I continue?
I know we beat this to death previously, but if you look in your maintenance column, it talks about anticipated costs based off of that. Does that 413, 820 represent what we would play, pay on the open market? Or is that less the, um, basic maintenance, tires, oil changes, things like that, that are being done at the sheriff's garage? What does that figure represent?
Absolutely. So, we use basically across all of our government clients, we have an average cents per mile of what it costs them to run based on their mileage patterns at their internal maintenance facility. So, that's not just parts and labor, but that's also the infrastructure, the payroll of what you pay for Bob Parks and his team. That's what we're estimating you're paying across the fleet at, what is that, 22 cents per mile in maintenance on the fleet? Now, the way that that maintenance cost dramatically drops is simply by running a new fleet.
Yeah.
What, it, nothing has to change in terms of how you're doing maintenance today. Bob Parks and his team can still do everything. I spoke with Bob Parks. He's going to continue doing upfit on all the sheriff vehicles, so that's not going to change. The only thing that's going to change is taking your fleet from 10 years old to four years old. Now, there's no more engine repairs. There's no more transmissions going down. There's no more high-cost AC repairs or anything like that. What's now being done at Bob's shop is simply oil change, brakes and tires. Everything else is covered by warranty, and we sell it as soon as the warranty is up. That way, the county doesn't have any of the expense of the main, major maintenance costs. And that's really the, the big implication of this program. It's, it's to have a proactive fleet plan to be able to narrow down exactly what it's going to cost you every year in maintenance and fuel by running a newer fleet. And you don't have any more of those reactive kind of costs that come up from having to replace an engine or having to replace a transmission inside of the maintenance costs.
So, if you go to year eight and you go to the net cash at minus 49,199.
Yep.
Is that a pattern that we're going to see regularly if we were to extrapolate this whole table the way that it's...
If you were to extend that out, uh, let's say to year 15 or 20, you would see that negative one year in that same pattern. The reason that is, is because in that specific year, you don't sell a ton of vehicles. So, if you look, you replaced 24 in year one, 24 in year two, 23 in year three. It's that 18 year where you're going to sell 18 vehicles instead of 24, 25. And that offset isn't as dramatic as what you would normally see.
So, you're talking the annual needs column?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And if you look at the very bottom, that net sustainable impact, that is going to be the average net sustainable savings after full implementation. So, starting in year six, we're, we're calculating that on average, it's going to save you $75,000 a year over what you're spending today. The 2 million in savings comes from the dramatic flip of replacing all these older vehicles extremely quickly.
As, um, you, of course, haven't been the only company that's come in front of us. We've had other ones too. You're the ones that, you're just telling what we want to hear, but the truth of the matter is, if you're only doing oil change, tire changes, we really don't need Bob Parks. I mean, you guys under normally go to contract, Jiffy Lube or whatever you do, we do oil changes. You get X price and then everybody takes your car and gets it done that way.
Right.
That's the true savings when it comes into that manage, that companies come into. Government, no, but companies do. And that's where you save your big money at. Here, you don't because we're still have a big overhead cost for oil change and tires. That's not very smart on our part.
So, from my, and I had asked Bob Parks, I had asked him, you know, if, is there any equipment that you guys maintain in terms of the fire trucks, the ambulances? Does he help with lawn mowers or small engine repairs, thing like, things like that? He had said that there is enough workload, that if they weren't doing these large repairs, they would be fine. I don't know what Bob's budget looks like or how many, how many people he has.
He has certified Ford, Chrysler, GM, so they're certified. Their cost is a lot, tools, equipment, everything.
Absolutely.
So, we're, all we're going to do now is just change oil, change tires, basically. And there's warranties that come with these, so you're not doing the warranty work because you're taking, like we do now.
Exactly.
So, your true cost is not like businesses have. Government doesn't have that same thing. We have cost involved in this thing, a lot higher cost than you would come to if you were doing solar or somebody in Michigan said you're some other company like that. That's how, that's how the true cost savings are.
Yep. Yep.
Go ahead.
What I will say is with the counties and municipalities that we've worked with, we don't typically see when we implement a plan like this that Bob Parks and goes away.
Government never goes away. I get that. I don't even need that answer.
I'm just saying there's, there, we can just do things more efficiently and quicker.
Oil changes are very quickly if I go to Jiffy Lube. So, I don't need to hear that conversation. But the truth of the matter is, that's where you save your money. That's where, that's where businesses pick it up. Our county has cost government, we have a cost basis, and that cost is high. And so, we won't get rid of our cost base. It's still going to be high. But we're going to be doing oil change and tire changes, and we're still going to do warranty work at the, whatever we buy the car from that, that year. So, we're very expensive to have a Ford, Chrysler, GM qualified, the tools and everything that they have to have and the skills that they have to do it. So, that's the only thing is that, is that we truly don't see the cost savings.
And here's what I'll tell you.
You changed my lawnmower, you fixed my lawnmower, that's not a cost.
Fair, fair. And everything you're saying is, is true.
I know.
When we do these analysis, right, and we show this big savings, sometimes I don't necessarily want there to be this large savings because to your point, the idea here is if we can run a fleet of vehicles over a four or five-year period for the same cost as we can running them over a 10 or 15-year period, who wouldn't, who wouldn't want to do that, right? So, if I can run a newer fleet, have less downtime, right, can be more efficient for the same cost as I'm already spending, you'd probably still do that. So, if I could have newer vehicles, you would most likely still do that. And this whole idea comes, it's, Nate and I aren't like brain surgeons by any means, right? All we're doing is piggybacking off of what our rent-a-car side of the business has done, you know, since 1957, right? And you all, as a government entity, have as close as you can get to what Enterprise can do on the rental side, right? And that is because of the government incentives that are starting to come back and we're seeing in the, the way that you are able to buy vehicles, then you drive a, for the most part, drive a lower mileage. We can really take advantage of the resale at a certain point in time. And that's what we do on our rental fleet, right? Is we don't want to go out and buy a million GMs and Fords, right, and Toyotas and Nissans every year as a company. But we found out there's, there's a certain point in time because of how we buy those vehicles and how we can remarket and resell those vehicles, that we can get out of them every 12 to 18 months and actually in that business turn a profit. And that's not going to be the same thing here, but you can use the same idea is if we just, with this market value finance, if we just pay for the portion of the vehicle we can use, we're really shrinking the depreciation that we're paying, and then we can take that cash and put it elsewhere in the county, whether it's towards an ambulance or towards a fire truck that we know are a lot more expensive. So, that's why, that's why counties and municipalities are using this, right? It's not necessarily for our maintenance program. It's not for some fancy fuel program or anything like that. It's, we can come in and we can put a plan in place where you can replace vehicles every four or five years, right? Image, you know, your, people are happy being in the vehicles are getting all the other soft dollar costs that go along. As long as we can do it for the same hard dollar costs, that's why, that's why entities are doing what they're doing.
Like I said, 80% of our vehicles are police, and I agree with that. But if it wasn't that case, but 80% of them are, those are quick mileage cars. I don't care if you traded in four, you traded in eight, because, and that's our term. You're still not going to gain that much because we're going to put a lot of miles. We have the highest miles in, the second highest of all of Indiana as far as miles are concerned. So, we're still going to be putting a lot on. You're still, the value still goes down appreciative, and that's, it is where it is. So, we have not seen it, we have not seen in our case, and I, I do studies on this all the time. Every car that comes in, we look at, unless you have a lemon car, and that can happen with any car you get, then we see those, where we place an engine, there's, it's very rare because you have a, a better transmission, you have better, I don't want to go on through this, but you have a lot better car than an army car is on the road. You're not going to have these issues with these cars, except when you have a couple lemons. You're going to, and we have an ambulance like that. We had one that we, that cost us lots of money. We ended up getting rid of it early, same as that. But you're still not going to gain a lot, what we're, what we're trying to do here just by doing oil. I'm saying, we still have a high cost. You're not gearing up for a high cost. You're just adding to it. You mentioned the things that I wanted to fix. I don't want those guys fixing that, but I get it.
No, I get where you're coming from. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying either. What I am telling you though is by getting out of that vehicle at four years versus eight years, while all that may hold true, that vehicle at four years is worth a lot more.
Sure.
And because you can buy...
I bet it's worth more in two years.
It is worth more in two years.
So, we should carry cars every two.
Our job is to run those, is to find where that lowest cost of ownership point is on every single vehicle. So, we don't just come in and say, hey, Parks is going to do this, you know, carte blanche. Everybody's going to be on a five, four or five-year term at this point. It's not how it works, right? We look at each vehicle individually. The reason we want a maintenance program or a fuel program is so we have that data. And now we're being able to create these APIs where we can just pull your data anyway, and then it allows us to look. So, we may get to year four or year five on a specific vehicle and go, hey, look, it's not time to replace this vehicle yet because of X, Y and Z, right? So, that's, that's the idea.
Mr. Keel?
Sorry, Randy.
Well, you, you wouldn't want to be changing all the vehicles at the same time anyway because of the equipment transfer. So, it'd be staggered out.
Yeah.
And I think I probably asked this question the last time. These would be police pursuit vehicles, correct? Okay.
And you know, you're exactly right. Every, every vehicle, every department would have a different point in time in which, and it's, again, it's up to you all, right? We come in every year and put our recommendation forward as to, hey, we think this year, based on the data we have, that you guys should replace 24 vehicles. If you tell us, well, we're not replacing 24 vehicles this year, we're doing 15 vehicles. It's not like we go, okay, well, we're not doing this. No, it's, it's still, it's your fleet. Our job is just to take the expertise we have of managing over 2 million vehicles worldwide, plus our commercial and government clients and looking at everything they're doing to find that spot in time to make the most sense to really get that lowest cent per mile in each and every one of your light duty vehicles.
Right.
That's the idea.
Well, wouldn't it be silly if you said you need to replace 20 and we're saying 15? It would be silly for us to say, to argue with that fact, I would think. I mean, for your benefit and ours.
I mean, yeah, you could make, you could make that, but there's also things that we may not see that are going on or different uses for those vehicles that we're not privy to all the time or that we don't have some of our data. It's input versus output, right? So, if we don't have the best information coming in, we're making some more assumptions kind of like we're doing here, which as we dig into, this is a model. The idea there is every year to look at, hey, how close to the model are we, right? As, as far as hitting it. And I've done that with, you know, a number of different counties. You come in every year, we stand in front of a group of gentlemen like yourselves, and we go through and go, all right, here's where we were last year. Here's where our goal was. Here's what the numbers say. Here's what we hit. Okay, here's what we can do this year. And, and it can change year to year. This just kind of illustrates what we're trying to accomplish within by using that market value finance.
Is Sheriff Redman over there in St. Joseph County happy with the program?
Absolutely. Yes, yep. And we just, we just, uh, you know, we've, you guys are all Sourcewell. That's kind of how we didn't have to go to a full, or they wanted us to go to a full RFP for the county, not just use Sourcewell. So, we went through the whole process so that local dealerships and other people could kind of put in for that. And this was a couple of years ago after we had just been doing business for like streets, but the sheriff's now on board and is very, is very, they're happy. Absolutely. Just having a proactive plan and knowing from a budget standpoint, kind of how we're going to be able to, you know, think ahead and know what we're going to replace.
Absolutely.
That just takes a lot of pressure off a lot of people.
Mr. Keel?
So, I wanted to clarify here. You're saying that over the next 10 years, if we went this route, that we would save 2.3 million dollars, correct? So, I want to work through how we got to that number. First, I'm just looking at fuel. That's an easy one. You're showing that after about five years, there's a 20% reduction in fuel costs? And this is because newer vehicles?
Newer vehicles, better fuel mileage. Yep.
Is this what you're seeing across your other fleets that you manage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're using this data where we're pulling is either from fuel.gov is where the fuel costs has come from. We're just comparing what we're seeing with what that says, and that's where we kind of come up with the, until we can actually track your fuel spend.
So, but this is, this matches what you're seeing in other places?
Hundred percent.
Okay. And then maintenance, um, you're looking at a cost today of $400,000. You said that's, that's estimated based off of what you typically see for places that manage their own fleets?
Within-house maintenance, yeah.
Within-house maintenance.
On, on the average, we see government entities range anywhere from 22 cents per mile to 26 or 27 cents per mile. So, we tend to be more conservative when we don't have the data. So, we, that's why we went with 22 cents per mile, to be honest with you.
Okay. And so, that $400,000 is inclusive of our Bob Parks and how many member or individuals are there in the fleet maintenance team?
Four.
So, so four people are included in that? And you're saying that we would be able to drop our costs by year 10 to $88,000 and still have four people?
The four people still have to maintain the other emergency vehicles.
This is, this is the cost in terms of just the light duty.
Just the light duty.
So, this is just the analysis on the light. Obviously, you would still have to maintain fire trucks and ambulances and any other things that they manage outside of light duty, but this is just the cents per mile across the 99 vehicles that we analyzed. I want to say there were 160, 170 total vehicles in the county.
Are you doing sheriff?
Including sheriff, yes.
Well, I mean, patrol, yep.
Okay. Yep, including those, yep.
So, you're only excluding ambulance. We don't have fire trucks.
Yep, I'm only excluding then ambulance and then heavy duty for the street department. I want to say she had 30, charity had 30 or 40 heavy duty vehicles.
But at least today, some of the salary costs, salary and benefit costs of those four individuals that work in that department right now is included in that $400,000. How, how are you going to be able to fit four people in $88,000?
That's, that would be, I mean, that's going to come down to, you guys are going, that's what you'll be... We're just telling you that by running a newer fleet based on 22 cents per mile, that by running a newer fleet, we can drop that cent per mile to what we see on average with a certain amount of miles. How you guys would manage internally yourselves with four people, that would still be left up to you all as far as what that necessarily entails or looks like.
So, realistically, we're probably reducing workforce in order to achieve the savings that you're proposing here.
Not necessarily. I don't, I mean, I don't know how much, you know, like we said, I don't know how much other work with those other vehicles, you know, or how extra, I mean, how much extra time? I don't, those, that's, that's why it's a model, right? That's why we're just, we have to use one cent per mile to kind of figure, to kind of dial down because I don't, we don't know exactly what that is. Now, as we move forward, we can look at that and we'll have a better idea, and the more information that's shared with us, we would use that to be able to tell you what that would look like.
Okay. Why won't we dwell on that too long?
If you, if you look at the 413,000 ranging down to 160, a lot of that's going to be covered by stuff that's not covered in our current fleet garage. It's not necessarily warranty work, but maybe transmission change outs, those sorts of things. A few things that came across this council just a couple of months ago.
So, when I'm looking at the savings, I, I took your spreadsheet here while the others were asking questions, and I typed it up into a, into a spreadsheet of my own. I summed the maintenance and fuel savings numbers, and I came up with a savings of 3.2 million. So, how is it that there's a $3.2 million in savings just in those two items? But you're telling us that we would save 2.3 million?
The lease cost. So, if you look at your lease cost, like your acquisition, so you're spending about $600,000 today in acquisition cost every year. At the peak, so at full implementation, you're going to spend about 1.2 million in lease cost across the whole fleet. But because your maintenance and fuels costs are that much lower, that's where the savings come in. So, the acquisition cost is about double what you're spending today in terms of full lease and fleet management, but the savings comes in your operating cost, so your maintenance and fuel. And that's where the net savings on the right-hand side comes out.
Because I'm looking at our, assuming that we spend $605,000 per year on purchasing new vehicles, and, and I can't say whether or not that's an accurate number or not, but if that's what we're spending, we would be spending about $5.4 million over the next 10 years. Whereas if we do the lease plan, it looks like it's about 8.7 million. Does that sound about right?
Are you factoring in the resale?
No, that was just the lease versus...
So, that's the big, that's the big. Our, the whole plan, and again, it's not rocket science, you buy, you buy low and you sell high, right? That, that's what we're doing here is you buy the vehicles that the government buy, you sell them at the retail market so that the government gets to take advantage of the difference in the cost, right? We had a three-year period where we put all of our government clients on a one-year cycle. And while administratively it was a bit of a headache, right? We were able to buy at the government price and sell at the retail price, and they were making $5,000 to $10,000 per vehicle that we were cutting in checks back to the government. And that's just because we can buy at your price, we can sell direct to retail markets, and you guys get to take advantage of that. So, where you're putting sheriff's vehicles or most people are putting sheriff's vehicles on gov deals for 3,000 or 5,000, we're selling them direct to consumer for closer to 20, 15 to $20,000. So, that again, comes right back to you. So, in big picture, what it turns into is the resale of the fleet ends up funding the fleet for you. And that's where you have a lot of the savings coming in is by taking advantage of that resale, not only the drop in, in maintenance and fuel cost, but being able to take advantage of the resale and own that equity and then keep it in the fleet to keep reducing the cost of the fleet for you as the program progresses.
So, why shouldn't we just do this ourselves?
Because you can't fund the vehicle like I can. Because the way that we fund the vehicle is, so with, through Enterprise, right? If I'm telling you, hey, let's go buy an Explorer Ferron, Sheriff Heck, it's going to cost you 45,000, right? We can sell it at year five for 20,000. You're only paying $25,000 for that Explorer. You're not paying 45,000. So, where you, you would go out and pay 45,000 cash for that vehicle, I can fund two vehicles for the price of one because you're only funding the portion that you use. And you still get the equity back into the government on the backend.
Why don't we just buy it from some sort of bulk purchasing program like that the state runs?
Because you still can't fund it the same way. You, you're not going to have a, a structure that allows you to fund a small portion of the vehicle to stretch your budget even further. So, what we're able to do is because you're only funding really the, the half of the vehicle because that's the only portion you're going to use because we're going to capitalize on the resale, you're able to fund two vehicles for the price of one and replace vehicles faster and create that proactive plan. You could absolutely buy at your price and sell at your, and sell the same way you're doing today and do it faster, but you're not going to be able to stretch the budget like we can in our funding program.
That whole vehicle, right? In this scenario, you're just paying a monthly, part of it's depreciation, part of it's our monthly lease charge. To your point, if you're not going to cycle out of these vehicles every four or five years like we're recommending, it doesn't make sense to use the market value finance if you're not maximizing resale at that point. I would never tell you to do that. I would never tell you. So, you can go out and buy whatever, 20 vehicles this year, pay cash for them and hold on to them for five years. But what you're, what you're not doing, able to do is you've, now you've taken all that cash, you've put it, sunk that into those depreciating assets. We're just paying for it as you move along so that you can take that extra cash that you were, you're paying in cash right now for these vehicles, you can put, where can that be used elsewhere in the county? Could it be used to fund bigger pieces of equipment, ambulance, you know, ambulances, those type of things? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, I don't want to take too much of our time here because I know we have a lot to cover this evening, but do you have some sort of study of another county where you actually took the costs, tracked them what they were at the beginning for several years leading up to this, and then what the implementation costs were throughout, like real numbers of them rather than projections like these are that we can look at?
Absolutely.
I'd be really interested to see those.
Absolutely. Happy to share that with you for sure. Howard, we've been back to, I've been part of it for the last six years. We've been back and sat down and looked at, okay, here's what the model said, here's where we ended up.
Yeah.
Typically, we're actually more conservative, right? Once we start, are able to start tracking that. Now, if we're able to track it, now if you're all tracking it, which is great, and then we're depending on that data that you're, you know, you're giving us, but, but yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And they wouldn't keep, yeah, and they wouldn't keep doing, doing this if it didn't, you know, if it didn't make sense. So, we always, I always emphasize this is a model. This doesn't mean you're spending 605,000. Maybe you're spending less. Maybe you're spending a little bit more in acquiring those vehicles. Same thing with the maintenance, right? It's our job to kinda just look at averages and what's out there, get something that we can all agree on, that we can use as assumptions and then kinda model. What we're working on right now as a company is trying to take this model and be able to do exactly what you said. Be nice for our client strategy managers, which you guys would have, that come out and sit down with you three to four times a year, to be able to come out and be able to use this as a live working document that says, alright, here's where we are versus what the model said. That's what we're all pushing for.
Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham?
Is your upfront acquisition cost less than ours would be just because you buy so many vehicles?
No, it's still, it's still your, the cost of the vehicle and a lot of times people do think that. They think, oh, it's Enterprise, so I'm gonna be able to save. I'm never gonna come in here and tell you that you're gonna save thousands of dollars buying, you know, doing the vehicles through Enterprise, right?
We save a thousand.
Where the savings comes in from, you typically are buying at invoice if you go to a dealership and you get your government incentives. A lot of times you're also relying on what's sitting on that dealership's lot at the time because there's no, nothing proactive about replacing it. So what we're able to do is figure out with each department exactly what should be on those vehicles. Basically, the bare necessities that you have to operate that tool the right way and then structure all those vehicles to be the same way. In that scenario, we see anywhere from 800 to $1,200 on average in savings, not by the buy that you're getting, just by, you know, the, building the vehicle, ordering it directly from the manufacturer, the way that you need it for each department. Does that make sense? But yeah, your buy is your buy, right? And you guys get a great buy, no matter whether you do it through us or, you know, elsewhere.
Any other questions?
Randy, can I ask a question, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought it was on Zoom. I didn't see you.
Oh. What is the effects of inflation on this? Does this assume a zero cost change or are you assuming, how, how do you factor that into this analysis?
So for this specific analysis, we don't factor in inflation because it's such an extended model. It'd be really hard to extend it past 10 or even 15 years with inflation because we don't know where it's gonna go. None of us would have guessed that inflation would be at, you know, 12 to 15% today.
Real savings, assuming cost stable.
Exactly. Yes, yep. Any other questions on the, the model, the concept? The second piece I just wanted to get into was what it would look like for year one in terms of cost so that you could hypothetically see like, okay, here's what we're gonna replace, here's the exact cost. You scroll down for me. And it should be the next to last page. It'll say menu pricing. It's, yep, that one right there. So my recommendation would be to replace 24 vehicles in the first year. That's gonna be nine for the sheriff's department. It's gonna be two four wheel drive trucks. Actually, in total, seven four wheel drive trucks between Parks and Rec and Highway Department. Those are all light duty. And then six passenger vans for the juvenile department. Those are all vehicles that are either broken down. I know the juvenile department has two or three vans that are currently out of commission. I don't know if, it's been a couple of months since I talked to them, those might have been handled by now, but. Um, and that's every vehicle that's over 100,000 miles in the fleet today. Your cost across those vehicles would be $265,000 in the first year. Now, the plan would be, yes.
Juvenile, that's state money. It's not reflective of us. We can't just, we can't go in with it.
It might be probation.
Okay, that's juvenile state.
It might be probation, I'm thinking of.
We can't touch those because they're.
Okay. We could take those out for sure. I, I connected to every department head and they had sent me what their fleet list and stuff.
I'm sure it's their fleet list, but that we don't.
The state funds it, okay. Perfect. Uh, but this would reflect the first year replacement plan, what that would look like. Now, the resale from the vehicles we would pick up would fully cover the year one lease cost. So if I were to replace these 24, take and sell the 24 vehicles that are replacing them, the calculation, a rough calculation is that you would break even in the first year between resale and acquisition. Your first year cost would be null. But, and that's really exemplary of how the program works, right? We, we take, we order the new vehicles, we drop them all for you, we take the old ones and sell them after the new ones are here. Again, we sell at retail channel and then we give that money right back to you. So that $260,000 would wipe out the entire first year in the resale value we would get from the, the vehicles we pick up.
Randy, can I ask one more about that?
Sure.
So the county is actually getting the value of vehicles that are sold. You're not using an index of vehicle values or something or what you should be selling them for or something in the market. It's, we're still getting the direct benefit of passed through to us.
Our resale market works is we're using, that we piggyback off of what's already in place for Enterprise. So the same avenues we're using to sell all those rental cars that have, right now they have 60, 70,000 miles. I don't know if you've driven a rental car anytime recently, but be previous to that, they usually had around 15 to 30,000 miles, right? So we're using the same avenues at that, so they'll, they'll go in there and what we do is we put hands on every vehicle. We will put a wholesale value on it and then we take it to market and it's internet based. So it could be sold anywhere in the country, but typically they keep it in the same areas. But then the highest bid, whatever the highest bid is, that's what we take and that's what goes back to the county.
Do you strip government vehicles of the identifiers or they're being governmental at all?
Absolutely, they can do that, yes, for sure.
Increase value?
Yep.
If I can, please. I asked this question last time. I'm gonna ask it again because I think it's an important question. Maximizing your profit versus maximizing county saving. I'm not questioning your integrity by any means, but you earn a percent of the capitalized value of the fleet, the, the value of the fleet, right? What, what's to prevent you, and can you again speak to this notion of being incentivized to kind of push the county to edge towards the newest vehicles possible and the bump of the capitalized value of the fleet as high as possible, because that's how you're paid?
So I'll just say how, how we make money, right? If you guys order directly through the manufacturer, right, there's money behind invoice that instead of it going to a dealership, it can come to, to Enterprise. So we try to make 2% to 3% on the cost of, the upfront cost of the vehicle, right, depending on the situation. If, then we have our maintenance, or not maintenance, our monthly management fee and our interest rate. And then on the backend, we have a service charge. So our guys aren't, our guys aren't getting paid or they don't make money off of selling a more expensive vehicle or anything like that. Our, our sales folks all get paid per vehicle the same amount, whether it's a Prius or whether it's a one ton fully loaded pickup truck, so.
But you are compensated related, the fee is related to the capitalized value of the fleet, right?
No, it has nothing to do, the, the fee doesn't have anything related to do. I guess the management fee is the only piece that plays off the capitalized cost of that vehicle. So if we have a point, what is it? Point 10%, if it's a $50,000 vehicle and it's a point 10%, that's $50 per month that we're making on that particular vehicle. But our sales folks aren't, they don't make more on that vehicle versus a $30, if that makes sense, right? So they're not incentivized to go out and sell higher vehicles, so we have a higher management fee. We want the right vehicle for the right usage within the county.
And the, the calculated cost savings is inclusive of. So the savings that were presented and conceptually modeled, that's including the administrative costs of us managing the fleet?
Adam?
Internally. So he told me to order those with the road ready package direct from Ford. That way his team can swap over their, their lights and stuff internally in-house. I don't know if there's any cost associated to the swap, but he said that he's done that for, you know, the last 20 or 30 years or what have you, so that he was fine with doing that moving forward. He didn't want me to change that. That was his request.
I wonder what the, don't we have cars on order right now?
We do, because we had to put them a couple.
So I wonder how many, what's the total number of those cars? We usually look at a dollar number. I don't know, I don't have it here in front of me. I was just curious, so.
Well, now that I think about it, I don't know if those are ambulances or if those are cars.
Ambulances are, I thought there was cars in there too. Wouldn't there mark? Yeah. Alright. Any other questions? No, greatly appreciate it.
What are, just so we understand, what are, what do next steps look like? Is there internal conversation? What, what do you need from us?
It would have, if we did do something, we'd add it to our October meeting, so. Alright.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And there is no continuation of our, nope, continuation of our budget during the workshop? I thought that's what happened there. We were supposed to advertise. We were gonna do that. We're supposed to advertise that this agenda here is gonna be killing up most of the evening anyway. Right. We never, it's the first time we've never done this. It's just something different. We're gonna take a recess.